Well, according to my iPad, it is 5:30. Shall we? Let's call a meeting to order. And I invite those who are willing and able to stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome to all our visitors. Hello. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some of them.
Thank you, Mrs. Wees. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Erdman.
Maybe a couple of things. We have Hazel Reinhardt, the consultant we asked to do our demographic study, is slated to be on that TV at 6:00 PM. We may have scheduled. So if we are in the midst of anything, we may need to table that discussion and then move to her item on there, just for convenience sake. And then, once she's completed, we can then go back to the item we tabled. And then also, Ms. Brandt is here. I'd ask that we kind of hear her out early. She's on new business. Just move her up to the beginning so she doesn't have to sit here all night. Is that be okay?
Sounds great. Should we do her right?
Well, after we...
Consent or the...
I think we can do consent.
And then her. Okay. Sounds great. Any other discussion, thoughts, comments on the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number four, visitors, community concerns, none. All right, we'll go on to number five, consent agenda. Are there any items 5-1 through 5-10 that you would like pulled out to visit about individually? No? Hearing none? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, 5-1 through 5-10? Thank you, Mr. Bahad. Mr. Roy. And thank you, Mr. Erdman.
Second.
Any other thoughts or comments? Discussion. All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda, as is 5-1 through 5-10, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are going to go to Heidi.
Yes.
Where's she at?
8.1.
Oh, one more?
8.1.
Oh, 8.1. That's where we're skipping to. We're gonna go to new business, 8.1, so Heidi can come up so she can go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is the mic on?
Yep, let me turn it on.
Okay, good evening. The national, or the FFA chapter here in Pipestone is traveling to National Convention on October 23rd through the 28th. And we are, again, taking a region bus and traveling with other chapters. We have seven students that are going, and then myself, and then we also have one student that is going to be competing in the dairy handling contest while we're at National Convention. And what we are requesting permission for is to be able to go on the overnight trip that is held in Indianapolis, Indiana, and requesting for the district to help assist pay in a substitute teacher for myself and the registration cost for the FFA members that are attending National Convention for those five days.
What is the cost for...
The registration cost is $35 per member going, and then also myself.
So this district cost that we have right here, that's ours?
Yep.
That's our cost.
Yeah, they're both west and center.
Oh, they're there, sorry.
I make a motion that we approve the district cost of $815 for the overnight FFA trip to National Convention.
Thank you, Mr. Bahad. Do I have a second? Ms. Roy?
Yes, ma'am.
For the second. Any other discussion or questions for Heidi? Any other thoughts?
Do we have a team competing this year?
We did.
Do we do?
Well, we did, and we did, but we don't.
Talk we did.
We did, yes. Our food science team had won the state competition, and all four students are currently in college, and they decided, as of a couple weeks ago, that they did not want to miss classes, so they will not be competing.
Okay.
Gotcha. And that all came up after I visited with you, so...
I was kind of wondering, because I'm going, we had quite a conversation, because they were, we were actually considering flying them out because of the circumstances, and I said, I think we could probably make that work, but plans changed.
Nope, they decided to pass it down, so...
Oh.
Which is too bad, but...
Good. Thank you. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving Heidi and her team to go to the National FFA trip and pay the district costs, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna return back to number six, 6-1. Administration, yep. 6-1-1 Jackie, review of the budget.
This is the first one for fiscal year '19, and we're sitting at 16 percent. Last year, we were at 17 percent. So I don't think there's any, I don't think I made any major errors in the expenditures. Find out as we go. Looks good now.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Go to six. Thank you, Jackie. 6.1.2. Hello, Mr. Strasser.
Hello. Couple things at the high school, middle school. First of all, one of the efforts that we wanted to do this year was get out better communication, and we wanted to do that starting around the third week of the, of the school year. So hopefully, we have accomplished that. I know myself as a parent, I saw a lot of things come through, but we wanted to get communication about what, what teachers were doing in the classroom along with, I know some, some teachers sent out individual grade updates. So that was an emphasis at the middle and high school level there. And then, just an update, when we started the school year, we did, we brought in for our ninth and our 12th grade students, this character challenge course, and they do, they go to schools that have their own course up by, I want to say Park Graff is in that area, but they gave me a talk to our ninth graders about certain concepts of excellence, respect, did a lot of team building, and then with our 12th graders, they did some concepts of legacy and leadership. So trying to kick things off for incoming ninth graders, give them a unique way. We did this on Thursday and Friday, the first week of school, and I thought overall went, went pretty well. Students seemed to enjoy it, and, and we had a lot of seniors, I think about 18 of them, who stayed for Friday and helped with the freshmen. And I thought that was a great way to connect seniors with freshmen during that first week of the school, school year. And then, we are continuing our Native American presentation series in coordination with And Out, the monument, and we have our, our second one. We did one last May, and then we have our second one this week. It's Dr. Jill Alberg Yogi, and she's, her main presentation is on hearts of our people, Native American, Native women hearts. So she'll be presenting to our high school students. That'll be Thursday, and then we'll have one more presentation late October. So just so you know that we've got some things coming in and trying to get some good experiences for our students. That's what I have.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Strasser?
Did we retain the battle acts this year?
We did. I kind of thought that went without saying, but...
Yeah.
This is recorded publicly. Thought that would be appropriate.
That's sounding great.
Never know.
That's...
Very good game. Good turnout, and yeah, we had some, I guess, just from a game standpoint, kind of went a little bit back before it got kind of close, and then our guys just played better at the end.
Any questions, McCory? Oh, thank you. Okay, we're gonna skip number 6.1.3 and go to 6.1.4. Hello, Ms. Gobert.
Hello. I also have a report from Mrs. Bartman.
Oh, okay.
She asked that I share a few things while she is on her way back from her MESA weekend of PD and such. First, I get to report that she is one of 20 presenters at the MESA conference coming up, so she's very excited. She didn't tell me to share that, but I'm sharing that. First of all, she wanted to talk about the beginning of the school year. Things have been going very well. We're off to a great start. Our new teachers are fitting in well and doing very good work with our teams and with our students. Things seem to be going smoothly so far, and she's very excited, and so is the rest of the staff and the kids, to be unstoppable this year, because that's their theme. And the preschool is adjusting well to their new location, and things are happening there. The rooms are a little bit smaller, but they're making do, and I'm excited I get to go there on Thursday this week, so see it for my own self. Then my report. Since our last meeting, we had our first PLC, our first early out. I probably assumed a little much, so, of where we were at and what we were capable of, so we went back and made a plan for our next time. And we are working on common course guides throughout the whole district. At the, each grade level, they'll have grade level checklists, and then, starting in, for surely eighth, seventh and eighth grade, they'll have course guides, so that we have the standards listed, we understand what materials are used, we understand the grading practices, so it's cohesive among all the teachers who teach that particular course or grade level. So I'm looking forward to our next early out, which is the 3rd of October, and planning forward with that, I am going to have a rubric. I did not think of my staff as I would have thought of my writing students, so I kind of dissed myself in that manner, but how can I make this a positive? So we'll go forward with that. My instructional coaches and I have been meeting weekly, and they are just like full of wins and full of questions and so excited to work with our new staff, and they started meeting, as of today, with our third-year and tenured staff to work on instructional goals with each of them. So they talked through the Danielson Self Assessment, the Charlotte Danielson Self Assessment, and were able to help them set some instructional goals. I have met with kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade as teams, and discussed the MCA results for their, the grade levels that they affect. Each grade level received today a folder in our team Google Drives that had, they have access to our benchmark reports that came out last Monday, rosters, their general district data that we'd already been working with, but they can have it and access it as they need to. We have spent some time with our English language learner teachers to help them plan cohesively with their paras and, and how that's all rolling with access testing and with our new WITA screener. We used to give a different type of screener, and so we're trying, we're doing what the state is asking us to do this year and try this new one. I spent some time locating more textbooks this year, have a plan for the spring, so I don't have to do that again this fall, or this coming fall. Fast testing is wrapping up for the fall. I think we just have a couple of grade levels at the middle school level to wrap that up this month. Beyond that, our district math team met for the third time. We met two times before school started, and we met last week, or two weeks ago. It's working very well. They're very excited to dig in. The comment was made that they don't think in 10 years have they ever met as a K-12 department, to look at the standards and look at what they're doing, and how we're doing it, and with what, and when. So it's gonna be fun. Probably the next school we're meeting you guys come to, nope, it'll be the following, you'll see, we're gonna use this wall as our map. We'll start with kindergarten with the standards, and we'll go all the way to 12th grade, and then layers will be added, because there's really no place we can, in our school, put that up and, and use that and dig in and see, so I'm excited about that. And the last meeting that we've had this week is with our title, two title teachers. Very excited to have the title teacher at Hill, who has a little more response to intervention training, and has worked with title as well, so she has some great ideas, and just syncing that together with our win time, or what I mean time, that's starting up in October at our elementaries. So we've had a very busy start to the school year in the curriculum and teaching department, but it has been amazing. We've created some great relationships and been able to help a lot of kids.
Questions?
Busy, busy.
Busy, busy. Any other questions? Ramel. All right, thank you. We'll move on to 6-2, school board members, negotiation.
Negotiations are wrapped up.
Thank you.
No.
No. We're done.
Tell the person the year, then the next group can start. All in again.
It's about thirty years.
Yes, they are.
Woo-hoo.
Nice.
I wonder Katie's doing the happy eight.
We are.
I believe you started your, you started your work in, was it June of 2017?
Probably.
With the teachers?
That sounds right. Yeah.
So a full year and five months of negotiating with everybody.
We took some time, we took some blocks of time off in there, but...
Yeah, we didn't do it the whole time.
But no, it's good to, it's good to have that done, and I think everyone on both sides seems pleased with how things turned out, so...
Okay. Well, thank you very much for all that. It's hard work, lots of meetings. That's it, first school board. Six, in line, yes?
Randy, you attended some phase training?
Yeah, I did a phase three, phase four training up in Maple Grove. Yeah, it was pretty fun. I would encourage everyone to do it. I think the most helpful part about the training was just hearing what other schools are doing and getting some ideas from them, so I guess my biggest takeaway was, there's just a lot to do. A lot going on, so, no, it was good, it was really good.
I think you'll be honored for that at the conference, isn't he?
Yeah, if you're able to complete them. Yeah, it's at the conference.
Yeah, phase three and four is really about community relations and dialoguing and working with your community through, you know, and, and that's where you hear all those ideas, so, yeah.
Yeah, it was really good.
Good.
It's good.
Good deal. Thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Anderson.
Enrollment numbers, now that we are started school, I think I've mentioned, we're probably about 10 students under what we were hoping, so, variety of reasons, people moved out of state, out of, some out of country, but we're just, we're down a little bit from what we were anticipating, so we'll keep an eye on that, and hopefully it doesn't drop down too much further. Our community survey is being mailed out to all district residents today. You might have seen the staff, so all the staff emails, the staff received, and if parents have an accurate email in our system, the parents would have gotten an email also with that survey, so it's being sent out that way. So there will be a few different, I mean, paper copies will come, but you only have to do this once, and we asked that you only do the survey once, but we did send that out and get that information out. So we'll, kind of an exciting time, we'll see what the survey holds for us and what that brings, but that is kicking off now. And it closes October 17th. At that point, they need a few months, or a few weeks to compile the information, and then our next community task force meeting is slated for November 7th, and I believe we are looking at holding a special school board meeting the following week. So we will be having some big talks about that here in the next month and a half or so. I had a few other items on here. I'm attending Massa, my superintendent's conferences. I always love this, they start on Sunday, so I lose a weekend day, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday next week, so I'll be out this weekend and up there for that, that's in Brainerd. I'm also been accepted to serve on the Southwest Service Co-op's Executive Council. It is a group of superintendent, they have superintendents from around the re, from the service co-op who serve us on that executive council, so I've been, I'll be a part of that for the next, I believe, three years, so, three years into being a superintendent, and I'm starting to get on these things.
That's good.
Well, you gotta be involved.
Thank you for putting that time in, but...
The exec, you know, the service co-op, we, we, they do a lot for us, it's a big organization, and so I, I hope that, that will, I hope that'll be good for me to learn more about the service co-op and how they do their business and how they serve schools, so I'm happy to do that. It's only like four meetings a year, so it's not like it's an extensive amount of time, so, and they coordinate it with another meeting we already have there, so... I would like to, the, the early dismissal, that was our first one, and, you know, we learned a lot, and I think that it, you know, like Ms. Wellman said, you know, we learned a little bit about it, and we gotta make a few tweaks, but I, I would like to just thank the board for that time, even though it's only been the first one. That two-hour block is really, we can sit down as a staff and dig into this a little bit, and I think two hours is just right. I don't think we need a half a day, but two hours, we can sit down, we can have discussions, we can get some work done, and I really see that that's gonna be important as we go forward and, and we, you know, clarify a little bit of what we want to get done in some of that work, and so I really see that as being good. We will continue to update you after those meetings of the work that we're doing and how it's going, but I think that's gonna be key with the standard alignment and that time with our people to do that, so that's important. I don't know if you have any comments on that, but... Then I did have one other item. Recently, there was some questions about food service and a new policy. We don't have any new policy, it's our same policy, but we did adjust one of our administrative procedures. We had some significant lunch, lunch debts that built up last spring, and a lot of it had to do from our families that paid, and students were charging their second and third helpings, and so we decided we needed to kind of tone that down a little bit, and we couldn't let that get run up so high. So what we've been communicating with students and families, and, you know, sometimes you have to go through some of these hard times, but when students, or when the lunch accounts are $10 or greater in the hole, we've said we're not going to let you have the second and third option, so that's the change that took place. And, you know, of course, here we are now in about a month, so some of these accounts are getting down, and so we've had to say, no, you can't, you can't charge that, you can't have that. They still have their full hot lunch, but they can't take those second, third options. So I, I met with Mr. Strasser and Food Service today, and I think, you know, there's been some growing pains, but it's going pretty well, but I don't know if you have anything to add, Mr. Strasser?
I would say overall, it's, it's going very well, but yeah, it is an adjustment for, for kids when they want a, a second or an extra, and their account is in that negative area, but also keep in mind, they can always pay cash, and they do that at the mall shop. A lot of kids go through there, and that option is always there.
And just to, I mean, food services, I mean, we want to do this as respectfully as we can. Their procedure is, is, you know, I'm sorry, but you can't charge that, I can't let you take that today, because, and they do let them know when their accounts are getting down to zero and when they're in the hole, so I think they've done everything they can to be as respectful and coordinate, cordial with all of this. It's always never a fun situation, but, but that's kind of what, what happened there. And sometimes, I think we can maybe take the impression like a student didn't get to eat lunch. Everybody eats lunch. We, we don't deny the hot lunch. We do, our policy does allow that, but principals have not ever gone to that point of denying a hot lunch, and you have to take the sack lunch, so, but we did have to try to limit, because that's where some of our big, big problems came in with lunch account balances, so...
So when are they told, when are they told that their account is ba, is, are they told the end of the line, when they have all this stuff, that they can't have it, or are they told before they go through the line?
Well, let's say, like today, you come through, and let's say your balance is $5. They'd say, oh, your balance is down to $5.
Okay.
Tomorrow, you come through, oop, your, your balance is under $5, you're, you're down to $2.75. It's that type of conversation that occurs at the point of sale. So if you think about getting to $10 in the hole, you've been reminded for about a week and a half, and that's how they, they do it. You know, we've talked about this also, I mean, we, we could get, you know, when they go in, it's speed and ease of getting this, and they can pick the piece of pizza up, and they can grab the order of fries and put it on their plate. I mean, we could get to where they don't get to, they have to ask, we could, but then we have to staff it, more staffing, and, you know, so it's, it's, you know, it's unfortunate.
When I think at this grade level, if you're being told three or four times, that is the case, I think, at that...
Especially at the secondary level where this, this happens, this isn't the issue in the elementaries, because they don't get choices.
Right, right.
They love it when they get up here, and of course, you've got the little fifth grader, first day of lunch, who throws on two pieces of pizza and has the hot lunch, and, oh, fries, cool, and a salad, and they got this whole plate heaped up, and it's like, no, no, and we try to go through, but, you know, you're always, some of it's learning lessons, and, you know, most of the kids, I think, have been really good about it and understanding, oh, and, you know, and yet, there's some times where you gotta have that, sorry, you can't, can't have that today, that's where, so...
And we've really tried to get the word out to parents to, you know, look at their account on My Payment Plus and set up alerts, and just another reminder for them, and I think that's a very positive thing, trying to get everybody in that situation is...
Overall, I'd say the, the Food Service Director's been doing a really good job of, of working with families and students and communicating and working with the staff, so, and just, you have some of these growing pains and learning lessons that occur, so... But I thought I should just share that a little bit, because someone said there's a new policy, and it's not a, policy's the same, it's just administrative procedure. We did make one adjustment with that $10 amount, I, you know, I don't know if there's anything magical about $10, it could be 15 or 20, you're just, you're just gonna have bigger debts, the more numbers you have, and...
And all the kinks are out of the system, as far as the reminders. I know, I've been getting mine now, that I know at the end of the year, we were having...
Yeah, last, we got a new system for all of that, and I think that's...
I mean, it's been working for me.
Another key component, and if we were having issues, I think we definitely back off on some of this stuff, but I think everything, we feel, is working pretty well, but not ever perfect, I guess.
I appreciate the clarification.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for the superintendent? Lots, comments?
All right.
All right, well, yep, we've got, and we're on to 8.2, so should we just do that one real quick, or do you want to stop?
Sure.
Do it quick.
Lana?
Go.
Lana? Sure. All right, we'll move to 8.2, approve retirement letter from Lana Eaton, special education teacher. Do I have a motion to approve that?
No.
No, she can't.
I know.
So, thank you, Mr. Erdman.
Second it's...
All right, thank you, Mrs. Strasser.
She is looking to retire at the mid-year, she becomes eligible for retirement. Mr. Strasser, we're sort of looking for, how many years has she served the district?
Thirty-three, I believe, yeah.
So great career. I've visited with her, too. You know, it's a hard decision when you finally decide to retire. She's done a great job, worked with great kids, and it's hard, sometimes they don't want to go, but she's okay with it, and I, I'm happy for her, so...
Yep.
Him, too.
Yep, good for her.
But she was in the classroom for a while, she took a break from special ed, we did a little project together. I did my fifth graders, and she had her first graders, and we had a buddy system going, so, yeah, it was pretty cool. So I wish her well.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, any other discussion? Oh, I need a motion, don't I?
Don't we have that?
Any other thoughts, comments? Best of wishes to Lana. All right, all those in favor of approving the retirement letter from Lana Eaton, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are going to take just a little break.
8.6.
8.6.
Demographics report.
Okay.
This is Hazel Reinhardt, who is the former Minnesota State Demographer. She now does a consulting business in four school districts. What are your demographic tan trends, Hazel?
Can you hear us?
Can Josh?
All right, they're all yours. Can you move that phone?
Do they have the PowerPoint in front of them?
Yes.
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 We do. Thank you.
Well, good evening, and thank you so much for arranging this video conferencing, and a special thanks to Josh who made it happen. Otherwise, it wouldn't have happened, to be honest. Let me tell you a little bit about an overview on making enrollment projections. I've been doing this for a very long time and I've worked in four states, done over 100 school districts. So I do have a little bit of perspective on, on projections and the things that can happen, go wrong and go right, and timeframes and the like. The projections I'm going to be presenting tonight are for 10 years into the future. I never do more than 10 years. That's already for a perfectly smaller population pushing it sort of to the limit. In making projections, I always look backwards about 10 years, which I have here. And I just wanted to remind you that 2007, '08 is the last year before the Great Recession. So the years between 2008 and 2010, '11, '12 really reflect the recession. And so it's really only since that time that, that we've had recovery and things sort of going back to normal. If we look at the past 10 years of Pipestone Area Public Schools, have a slight enrollment decrease, 21 students to minus 1.8%. In essence, you could say it was flat. And resident enrollment decreased a bit, by 41 students or 4%. But basically, enrollment trending down a little bit, but not a great deal. And because open enrollment is playing such a large role in Minnesota today, we look at the percentage of students that are non-residents and for you, it's about 4.5%. The next slide on key findings, the market share. Your market share is about 80%. And that is really affected, you have some students in non-public school although, schools, although that number is, is not as firm as I might like. But the big issue you have is you have students open-enrolling out of the district in much larger numbers than open-enroll into the district. So you have a net loss of 160 students from open enrollment. The question people often ask is, what can we do to get back those students? My experience is that, that that's generally much easier said than done. The real opportunity comes if you can stop the outflow of students of this point forward, not whether you can get people back. So if you, if you can identify what seems to be having them move on to one of your neighboring districts so that you can stop the new students from making that choice or other parents from making that choice. Then as we look toward the next 10 years and 2027, '28, which is, 10 years is not a long period of time, but when we think of it, is approaching almost 2030. We're moving into a timeframe that will be very different from the immediate past. Moving into a timeframe when many more people will be elderly, where the, the school age population and the elderly population in Minnesota will be approximately the same number, which is a fourth in history. So it's a very different period. But even in that context, I'm projecting enrollment growth either basically stable or actual growth in, in those years. Elementary, middle school and, and high school enrollment are all projected to increase, but the K1, I'm projecting to be sort of flat, but the others to be increasing. Also, as a part of this, kindergarten is projected to be larger than the previous year's grade 12, which is a, a factor that drives growth. And then the net outmigration is projected to continue. And then I made a projection by race ethnicity and projecting here that students of color will increase from 23% to 29% in five years. People often ask what makes projections too high or too low, so I'm attempting to give you some reasons, things to, if you will shine a spotlight on. Too high, most likely it would be that the projected kindergarten is too high or that you lose more students through open enrollment, that is, more students open enrollment out of the Pipestone Area Public School. And the other thing we have to consider is a recession. That we've, we've really had a string of growth now, actually a recession for a longer period of time than it's no joke. And in the next 10 years, we probably have some kind of economic slowdown and that could have an effect. Or it might make these projections too low. Well, at converse, that there are more kindergarten students than projected or that you have less outmigration than is that you're able to contain the flow of students leaving. The next slide on education choices, that's for the year 2016, '17. Let me just explain that school enrollment is essentially a demographic phenomenon because school attendance is compulsory in every state. And so the population that is within the age range that's required to attend school is a demographic phenomenon. And the only intervening factor is what are the choices that, that students have. And so I'm shown here in this table, the percentage of Pipestone Area Public Schools compared to the state of Minnesota. And so you can see that you, you have fewer students in non-public settings. You have more open enrollment out. Charter schools, much less. And that open enrollment out, that, that really reduces your, your market share. So everyone get that concept? Because I've estimated the school age population enrolled in school and then what percentage of that are enrolled in Pipestone Area Public Schools. In making enrollment projections, there are really only two methodologies and various takes on them. Primarily here, we're gonna look at the cohort survival method. That's the traditional way of estimating and projecting all population, whether it be the total population, school age population. It's a very fine method, superior in almost all ways, other than if you have a large housing development. For example, if you convert a hay field or a corn field, wheat field to housing units. It, it takes it a little while to catch up and that's where a housing unit method can, can be helpful. But otherwise, the housing unit method generally is cruder. It's more static and, and not as reliable. As I mentioned, I'm making these projections long-term, not annual. And I always caution people, don't use these projections for annual budgeting. You can use them to think about more long-term financial position, but not annually because we do things a little differently if we were projecting just a single year. So we're looking here long-term. We're looking for clues that provide evidence about the future. And then I always want people to remember that there is randomness and fluctuation that is not predictable. And even sometimes after the fact, it's very hard to explain what really happened that caused some of those things to fluctuate that we did. The next slide, I show you the enrollment total, resident and non-resident. As you can see, over the course of 10 years, you basically had an increase of 20 students, non-resident students. So in other words, your enrollment is very, very much driven by your own resident enrollment. And if you look at that closely, you can see that resident enrollment was higher in 2007, '08, '09, declined a little bit, uptick again about 2013, '14, and now has been ever so slightly. Components of enrollment change in the next page. This is sort of a standard demographic way of looking at things. The first columns to the left show you the change in, in enrollment and the percentage. The column natural increase/decrease in the general population, this would be the difference between birth and death. The school age population is the difference between the incoming kindergarten class and the previous year's grade 12. Because the grade 12 students, you can never recapture again, I mean, they graduate. And so as you can see here, your numbers have always been positive. That is, that your incoming kindergarten class is larger than your graduating outgoing class of the previous year. However, the rightmost column of net migration in here, as I explained, we can't really tell the difference between students moving across the district's boundaries versus making choices for other options, either in or out of school, out of school. And there, the numbers have been negative every year for the past 10 years. And then the combination of the natural increase/decrease in that migration is. From, yeah, that, that works. The next table slide shows you enrollment. And there are a couple of things that I had to draw people's attention to. One is the size of the kindergarten class over time. And you can see at that top row, that kindergarten started out in the past 10 years, that 85 students increased to 102, then fluctuated around a little bit, then 101, then 99. So it's, and I'd say it's running at 100 or a little over 100, the way it would be trending today. The other thing to look at is the rightmost column. And this tells me even with the naked eye, I can see that my early grades are larger than my later grades. So I have some, what I call built-in growth momentum. You have built-in growth momentum just because you have larger grades early on and we assume, of course, that they will stay in school. If you think about the diagonal, if you start with, with 85 kindergarten students in 2007, that translates into 78, that's the same group of kids the following year, to 77, to 72, to 74, to 77. So you can see, that really is the measure of the net migration or when converted in those classes. The next slide, I drew this average of grade size. So kindergarten first grade, you average 97, 2 to 4, 81, and then 5, well, 85. You have a little bit of net in-migration between grades 8 and 9, which is one of the reasons that that's a little higher. But otherwise, you can see that 97 to 81 is what is the growth momentum. The next slide, here, we have to start thinking now about making projections. And in the cohort survival method, there are two points that we have to make assumptions. One is on the incoming kindergarten class every year. And the other is the survival rate or net migration. Now, the best measure we have of estimating the incoming kindergarten class is based on resident live birth. And the term resident live birth has a very specific meaning because on the birth certificate, the mother has given her address and then the city, county, and state. This is then put through a program that verifies whether that address is in the county, city, state that was listed. So it really gets rid of errors. And this, this then is counted as a resident live birth without regard to where the child was born. So if it's a resident live birth to a Minnesotan, it doesn't matter whether that child was born in North Dakota, South Dakota, Iowa, Wisconsin, or anywhere else in the country because the mother in the birth certificate said she was a resident of some specific place in Minnesota. And that folds for Pipestone County without regard then to where the child was born. The mother was a resident of Pipestone County. And then I show you also the data for the city of Pipestone. The, with a couple of things to look at, I guess, here, called to our attention, that in 2007, I folded that number. 2007 is the largest number of births in Minnesota and the United States since 1964. They've got that. And then in 2017, Minnesota has not yet released its birth numbers, but the US has, has said that nationwide, births in 2017 are the lowest in 30 years. And that decline between 2007 and 2017 is largely attributed to the recession and the postponement of births. However, now, most of our developers who would think about births and fertilitys, that, that they are now saying that the millennials, the births delayed are births foregone, that they do not expect any uptick in births. And that a larger proportion of that millennial generation will end their childbearing years without having a birth. And you can see in Pipestone County, you had your, I think 2006 was the third year in this, of some years. And it turned down a little bit in the last couple of years. And I made an adjustment in the projections assuming that, that these were maybe just randomly a little, little lower than might be normal. The next slide, really, I'll have you go on to look to the table of numbers. Births are recorded on a calendar year basis. And I wanna create what I call a kindergarten pool. That is, that the child is age five by September 1st, which is the law in Minnesota. And so I take two-thirds of one year and one-third of the other year. So, you know, about a third of kindergarten class is turning six shortly after school starts. And so that, that's what the pool represents. And then we look at the percentage that your Pipestone's kindergarten was of that pool. And you can see here, it bounces around. It was higher early on and it went through a lower spell. And more recently, it's back up at 89.4 and 87.6% of, of Pipestone County births. The previous slide, I look at the averages because I'm trying to fit something that, that seems reasonable here. And interestingly, the past 11 years, the average was 79.1%. The past five years was 79.9. So as recently as five years ago, we were at 79.9. But the past three years, the average is 82.5 and the past two years at 88.5. So the basis of that, the slide now, after that table of numbers, I'm making assumptions about the kindergarten. And I'm gonna use a low assumption of the average of the past two years at 82.5% and a high at the average of the past two years at 88.5. And I'm gonna multiply that against a pool, so see what's happening there. Now, for the next five years, children have already been born. But in this projection of 10 years, I need another five years in which I have to project what I think of births or, or the pool will be. And so what I've done here is I took the average of the past four years of Pipestone County resident births, averaged, and used that as the base, and then projected the change that will occur at the same grade as Minnesota's zero-year-olds. I'm projecting the change to be the same as statewide. And the implication of this is that by doing that average of the past four years, I'm saying, well, the last year or two might have been a little low. I would give you a little higher base. For a larger populations, I probably would have started at the, at the past year. I would have been a little, a little more lightweight here. The next slide shows you the projected Minnesota zero-year-olds. And what's significant about this is you can see how absolutely flat these numbers are. And so, in other words, we really, something very, very dramatic would have to happen in Pipestone County to have you have a significant increase in births. You know, not every place will be exactly at the state level. You know, not every place will be exactly at the state level, but it really says we're looking at something very flat going forward. And then the next slide, I take the projected pool. In bold are the numbers from that previous table that we've already had, and then in the non-bold are the projections. So for 2018, 19, we expect the pools to be a little larger. And then 2019, 20, 20, 21, it increases inside, and then it's essentially flat. Now, in reality, it's not going to be flat, but we need to think about it as sort of trending, the average being low or pretty stable. And then the next table looks at the kindergarten projection. So I now have the pool from the previous table, and I'm going to project those percentages, a low kindergarten of 82.5% and a high of 88.5. And then you can see in 2017, 18, you'll get 99 kindergarten students. And we have a range here for 18, 19 of 104 to 112. And then you can see how that works out over time. And at the bottom, I show you the total of kindergarten students over the 10 years, 995 or 1,067. And the importance of that is simply to compare it to the past 10 years when you had 984. So what that says is that the low kindergarten projection is basically putting in about the same number of kindergarten students as you had in the past 10, slight increase, but pretty much the same. The high kindergarten projection is obviously producing more kindergarten students in the future than you had in the immediate past. Okay? And we'll see a little bit later that those kindergarten projections were really driving the projections of overall net migration. Now, the next table looks at net migration, and this is what I've talked about, is that diagonal line going down. And I folded out the transition from grades 8 to 9, where you can see that you usually pick up maybe about 10 students a year that flow into your high school. There's one other thing that I really called to your attention that makes you a little bit unusual, and that is that you have a loss of students between kindergarten and grade 1. And that's kind of atypical. And for some years, that number was actually fairly large, you see a minus 17, a minus 15. I don't know whether this means that you have students who, who attend your kindergarten and then move to a private school for grade 1, or what is happening there. But that's an atypical pattern that existed throughout the past 10 years. So it's not just something random that's happened in a year or two. In the next slide, you look at net migration, and I aggregated it by your buildings. And of course, it's that kindergarten, the grade 1, that's producing those negative numbers at the 8 to 1, 2 to 4. You can see it's a mixed pattern, some years some minus, some years plus. And then the 5 to 12, you have more often negative numbers than not. But that is largely driven, if you look at the previous page, by the losses that you experience from grades 9 to 10, 10 to 11, the students either moving to an alternative burning center, dropping out of school. That's a very typical pattern, occurs statewide. The next slide shows the survival rates. It explained in the report, the survival rate is really just a percentage. The others are raw numbers. Any survival rate greater than 1 means that you have a net inflow of students at that grade transition. If it's less than, than the 1.000, you have a net outflow. And here, I selected two periods, averaged them, low of the past three years, the experience on the high of the past five. And then we can see, really look at it, at the grade-to-grade transition, how they differ from each other. The, pretty similar at the 8 to 9. One is 9.9% increase, and the other is 10.7. But does produce enough of a difference to make it meaningful that. And then when I look at the projections overall on the next slide, the kindergarten assumptions have a larger effect on the difference in those projections and the migration. The significance of that is really says, we really need to keep our eye on those kindergarten numbers all the time. And if we see them diverging from the projections, then we need to take another look. The kindergarten assumptions account for 64 to 67 student difference in 10 years, while the migration only 38 to 41 students. So we get a sense of the proportion of that. And then the next slide simply shows four cohort projections, the marriage of these various assumptions, the low kindergarten with the low migration, low kindergarten with the high, high kindergarten with the low, and the high kindergarten with the high. And as we can see by the line, the low row is basically a flat enrollment that goes up a little bit early on, drips back down. As we get into the high kindergarten assumptions, we get what I'd say, real growth in the population as enrollment. And then the next slide looks at enrollment projections, baking those projections by the first five years and the second five years, by how you have students in the buildings. And as you can see, at the K1, in the first five years, it's essentially flat. And the second five years, again, there's also essentially flat. But at 2 to 4, you pick up, you have a little growth in the first five years, and you have at that point then stability, basically flat of the second five years. And then at the high school level, you, again, I guess, the difference between 673 and 680 is flat. And the difference between 680 and 688 is flat, so the first five years kind of flat. But then, as you look to the longer term here, the two high kindergarten actually produce some growth in the high school population 10 years from now. Then I analyze this, the next slide looks at analyzing, what's the natural increase in net migration that's embedded in these projections? And so the natural decrease averages 23 to 32 per year, depending on the kindergarten assumption. And that is a change over the past 10 years. When the past 10 years, natural increase averaged 19 students a year. Net migration averages a minus 20 to a minus 23 per year, depending on the migration assumption. And that really falls right around what the past three years have had a minus 21. So that's, that's what's, what's really driving this, that you now have in the system classes that will be larger leading the system compared to the size of the incoming students. I don't think you'd admit that I really didn't do anything with it without having a really defined sense of the number of units. But I can tell you that you would need many, many units to alter or produce a result different from the cohort. And then the next slide shows you the race ethnicity projection, and the district-wide projection is made independently of the projection for white students and the projection of students of color. And as you can see, those independent projection for race ethnicity, the sum is very, very similar to the district-wide. It's a very, very good fit on there. And then the last slide shows a comparison in five years for the white population, basically not going down that much, but you can see students of color increase. And then what the percentage changes are compared to those five-year periods, and then the percent distribution. So the students of color going from 23% to 28.6, rounded to 29%. So with, with that said, we're looking at Pipestone area schools enrollment in 10 years being basically what it is today, but more likely being higher than it is today. People often ask, how do I select which projection to use? And I generally would say, for any physical plant work, building work, you want to take the highest projection. And so that would show you having some, some growth in the environment. You have some change in direction, moving from what had been net, not net, but natural increase being positive to switching around to being negative. And the net migration being essentially what it has been in the recent, very recent past, in the past three years. I can tell you that statewide in Minnesota, open enrollment has increased every year, the number of students and the percent of enrolled students who are open enrolling. So that's something that you have to keep in mind and assess whether, why you think it's happening and whether you can intervene on it or not. As I try to be realistic with people, it's easier said than done. And why, you know, and, and your competitors are, are very bold, usually they run buses right into your, your district. So that's how I would, I would summarize what I see as kind of the outlook for Pipestone in the next 10 years. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hazel?
Yes?
When you say the housing study or the housing units would have to increase significantly, about how many housing units would you be talking about to start seeing some type of...
See, what I don't know is what your yield is. In some districts, you get maybe a student or .4, 0.4, or 0.4, .5 a half a student for every, every single family detached. However, that is then can be, the counter effect is what's the change in the existing units as they sell and turn over and people age in place and the like? So that is why you'd really have to have probably an increase of 20, 30% units, you know, huge. People always say, oh, we're going to have these apartments, or oh, we're going to have these townhomes. Well, the yield of apartments is very low, and the yield of townhomes is very low. So it's really single-family detached units that produce school-aged kids.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Hazel?
I'd put everyone to sleep, I think. You know, these numbers are always more engaging to me than they are to other people.
Well, we appreciate your time and the work that we're doing. And so having this information, I think, is helpful for us as we work with our community. And we do get questions about where is our growth, and this gives us something to say. You know, we're, I think, one of the issues, concerns were is that we would have declining enrollments and I...
I really don't think that is the case. Really, I had looked at this, you know, and I've done a lot of, a lot of studies now, and I am, this is that I am projecting decline, you know? And I don't see any markers, any evidence in the things one normally looks at to say your enrollment will decline.
Okay.
I mean, the worst case, I think, is that it's flat.
Worst case flat, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Hazel, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
And I trust Josh will know how to get this disconnected because I'm hopeless.
We will have him get you disconnected.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
All right.
He was here.
Can Seth hang out with us for a while?
You can watch our board meeting for a little while until I get here. Or you can turn your TV or your screen off.
All right, so that was 8.6. Now we move back up to 8.3. Bye, Hazel. Thank you, Cory. He's going to hang out here. All right, 8.3.
Well, wait a minute here. So I guess with the demographic report, I mean, we just, the purpose of doing that was is to see where we would, if there were any concerns or any issues that we felt, or if there was something where we were going to have significant growth of how we would plan any type of facility projects that may come forward. One thing I did hear her say is that she recommends that you take the high projection. So we would want to look at what her high projections are, and if we do decide to go with any type of facility work, that's the number we'll probably want to provide to our architects if we get to that point. So that's another reason why you do these things, and you got some facts that you're basing your, your decisions on. So I don't know if anybody had any other thoughts or...
Does she, like, compares to other districts our size and town size or community size?
You know, she's a, she's a former state demographer. So she's, she digs into all the records and the counties, and she does this all over the state. So in terms of comparing us, I'm not, she, she takes a look at our school district, she gets all the data that we have, and she knows where, where this is. Not stuff I want to dig into.
Do we have a feeling where, why we're negative from kindergarten to first grade? I mean, that seems weird to me.
I have a feeling.
Why?
Because kindergartners get held back.
That's what I was thinking too.
That could be. How many on average get held back every year? I mean, it's, I was thinking one or two students or is there more than that?
With the implementation of our junior kindergarten, I don't know how that affects those numbers. You know, to look at that last year and now, to look at it this year, how does that affect it?
And preschool in the coming years.
Increase from, from 8 to 9. And when I looked at this, and I looked at the trend, and I started going, oh my gosh. I mean, back in, between 2005 and 200, I mean, it went eighth grade to ninth grade, went up 11, went up 6, went up 10, down 2, up 7, up 12, up 8, up 14, up 4, up 7. I mean, that's over the last 15 years, from 8th to 9th grade increase. So, who, Cory, I have a principal, who are you recruiting?
I think you have to look at two things. Number one, credit status of students. And, and so students need to have, earn 10 credits to be considered a sophomore. So the students who don't earn 10 are going to be listed as ninth graders in the system. So you should see a corresponding ninth to 10th grade decrease over those same years, which I haven't looked at, but.
Well, they are.
So it all levels out, I mean.
I mean, when they get their credits.
Oh, it's all, yeah.
I'd be interested to have someone look into those numbers to see if it is kids being held back or if it's, I mean, a concern. Because if we are really losing students, I think that's interesting to find out why from kindergarten to first grade.
Although it might be challenging because...
Although it might be challenging because now that we have preschool, that might adjust everything going forward as well.
Maybe.
And junior K. That'll affect the future, I would think.
One other, I mean, that one other slide showed, you know, we had an 80% of kindergartners, was it 80%? In the last two years it was 88, I mean, or 90% or something like that, retention of kindergartners. You know, where, when something was going on, yeah. It's interesting numbers that we see.
Yeah, it's just, I think, something we don't want to totally ignore and say, you know, that it's not a concern, especially where she doesn't see that often.
It's just good news that we're still moving up.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
She's projecting some going backwards and declining.
Right.
It's nice that we're moving up and we'll be higher in 10 years. Those are good news or not. I just thought it was interesting that the school age of elderly would be the same.
Yeah, I guess I'd heard that, that the population trend is not for, it is looking to level. So I think there was maybe a decrease or something with baby boomers, but it is looking to level out.
Well, Randy keeps having kids.
That's true.
Well, you look at it, the families are from three to two to one.
And the opening, the open enrollment, she said that's an issue right now. So I don't, how do we, that's always been a topic that we've been talking about ever since I've been on is...
I thought it was interesting that she said you can't really get them back. You can just stop the outflow. That's an interesting concept.
Yeah.
Again, no scientific study, but I mean, our elementary facilities and some of that is not the most attractive. And, you know, if we do do something like that, will that have a bearing? I guess that's something to watch. You know, appropriate facilities for special education and, you know, those types of things are all possible factors. I know Deb and I sat down in the conference room one day with the, with the district map and the open enrollees and addresses. And I mean, you've got a lot that are out east of Jasper that, I mean, there's a number that go to Edgerton. I think they just associate more that way than they do up in Pipestone. They've never gone to school here, just kind of always the way it's been. So you're going to have some of that. I don't, you know, know. I also know that they run a bus into town, so.
And how many school districts and counties have three schools in their county? Three choices to go to. You've got two in Edgerton and one in Pipestone. There ain't many of it in the state that are that way.
When you get up to Minneapolis, there you got lots of choices.
Right, but I mean, around here in Earl, there's not a lot of...
No. I know all the larger school districts like us, I mean, we're, we're not large, but we're larger than our neighbors. And, you know, the Worthingtons, the Marshalls, the Laburnes, you know, they all have school buses coming into them from the smaller districts. The smaller districts are surviving off of, you know, some of the open enrollment options that are there. They run buses in. That's part of choice. And I guess I, you know, if we're, I think we're here to serve our students, but if there's something that we're not doing, we can take a look at that, continue to work hard. And I think if we're doing a good job, people will, will stick with us, so.
All right. Okay. Now move back up to 8.3?
8.3.
All right, 8.3 is the approval of the levy limitation certification report for 2018 payable 19. And then we need to set a date for the budget and levy discussion.
Each year, this is where the school district, we have to go through a process because we levy taxes on the community, on the school district property owners. And so this is our levy certification report. This year it's 40 pages and it has all of the formulas, all of the adjustments that were made in the legislature. The county auditors adjust property values and all of that goes into that document. I believe I have it right here. This is the, here it is, the 40 pages goes through and has all of these changes that have occurred in there. Right now, we have set the levy to be the maximum, the maximum levy. So we just automatically do that at this point. What we have from now up until our truth in taxation is time to consider those types of things. We do have to have a truth in taxation by December 15th. Is that the date?
Tell us.
We can have it on the December 17th.
We can have it on the 17th board meeting.
December 30th. All, when does this all happen?
It has to happen between...
There's a date where you got to have your levy certification. At that point, the board would need to approve the final levy authority. That gets sent into the county and that's when all the tax statements go out. That's where, this is all for fiscal year 19.
Has to be between November 24th and December 28th.
Okay. That's our, and we can now run our truth in taxation as part of our regular school board meetings. So we will set that for our December meeting would be where I'm at. So right now, when we look at our, oh, you don't have it on here, but our overall, all levies combined, we are looking at a 5% increase for next year. Again, we really didn't do anything different. It's just where a lot of that stuff with the changes. Last year our taxes went down 5%. We didn't do anything. The year before that, they went up 11. So right now we're in this up, down, up, down process. I know that because of our property values, we often qualify for more state aid with a lot of things, which is good. When you look at the ag to school, we do not get that on our levy certification. That comes through the county and individual farmers will get that 40% reduction. But that goes through the county. So wish we got to look that good, but we don't get to put that number on our certification, so. But Jackie put together an explanation of the differences here. Just take you through this very quickly. The equity levy, it was an equity adjustment. Equity is where we're...
If anyone's ever interested, I have a whole packet of how they determine this. And you can read the three paragraphs where they talk about equity adjustment. They compare the metro districts and they take the rural districts and they determine if you, based upon your operating levy, if you're in the first tier, second tier, then they use some formula and yeah. But yeah, I could, I can...
I'm okay.
Okay. I know you've had a lot tonight, so we ain't bogging you down with this, but our career and technical levy has increased due to we had a couple of programs get added. We'll have to see what happens. This is probably, it'll get adjusted in a couple of years because we're having an issue with our business, not having a business teacher, but having a community expert license, which maybe they'll still approve, but I, you know...
And this is what happens. That career and technical levy, that's based on what I said my fiscal year 19 budget was going to be in that area. Then what will happen next year, I'll have to put my fiscal year 19 actual in there, which is going to be less than what my budget was due to the business ed teacher leaving. And then they'll make one of those adjustments that they do to square it up.
We do have an increase in our lease levy from the tennis courts. That had to go up that amount. Last year we only levy 20,000 or something or 18,000. And this year it's more like 90,000. Abatement adjustment.
That's the definition.
Jackie, what's an abatement adjustment?
Right there.
Okay.
And if you want a further explanation, I'll have to talk to Tyler at the county, because this is what they do.
And then achievement and integration revenue. This is something new that we will be eligible for beginning next school year, but we have to put that on this year's thing. That's about $105,000. About a fourth of that is local levy. The rest is all state aid. So to get the $105,000, there is some local levy portion. So we're putting in for it right now. And again, that's something that we have to put together a budget and a plan and we will be working on that. That has to be submitted by March, so that's where that's at. So the plan here is, is that the finance budget committee will be taking a little bit closer look at the levy certification and bringing a recommendation to the full board. And then we will be having our truth in taxation. So all of this is basically preliminary, but we do need to accept that, you know, this is where we're at for right now and that we'll be working on this over the next few months before we finalize it in December. But that'll be where we have our actual numbers there, so.
So we need to approve the levy limitation certificate, certification report for 18 payable 19.
At the maximum.
At the maximum. Thank you, Mr. Urban. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Pals. Any other discussion? Any thoughts, any other comments? All right, all those in favor of approving the levy limitation and certification report for 18 payable 19 at the maximum signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. She carries. We need to set the date. Would that be December 17th?
At 6:00 p.m.
At 6:00 p.m.
That one has to be at 6:00 p.m.
Okay, at 6:00 p.m., December 17th. Thank you, Mr. Oy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Any other discussion? Any other thoughts, any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of December 17th at 6:00 p.m., the date for the budget and levy discussion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. She carries. Moving on to 8.4, approved snow removal quotes for 1819. Thank you, Mr. Oy. Thank you, Mr. Box. Discussion?
Well, we're hoping we don't have to use it.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's not very much, no.
Good luck with that.
But we might need them.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the snow removal quotes for 1819 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. She carries. Eight five, 1819 district goals.
We've had a work session. We've talked a little bit about our goals and I've, you asked me, we had some input. So I, we've put together some things, kind of had some of your requests and where things are at. And so the admin team is, as you can see, anything in yellow is kind of an addition or adjustment that we've made in some of the work that we've done since August, because that's when we kind of, or July is when we started talking about our goals for this year. So I'll just go through these quickly. First goal, high academic achievement is what the board wants. Of course, we are looking to improve MCA math and reading performance at each grade level to the state average. We're going to continue our curriculum alignment, professional development, and our kindergarten readiness. You will now see we've added some things and we have specifically made reference to third grade students being proficient in reading by the end of third grade. And our current proficiency is 51.8% and we are looking to raise that to 90% by 2022.
Wow. Sounds good.
Yeah, wow. So starting the beginning of this school year, the K4 staff has negotiables and non-negotiables for the implementation of the Journeys reading series. And we've been able to cinch up and really focus on what are we doing and when are we doing it and how are we doing it? And so they will be monitored upon those non-negotiables as we go through the year because you guys know you work at and take care of what you're being monitored on. So that's part of what we want to be able to do. And with those in place, this should be...
There was another bullet under improve MCAs here that said we, all third graders will read at grade level by the end of third grade. That's 100%. Why would we, this is 90%, but we're at 51. So you start looking at these numbers, but this is also by 2022. So this is three years from now. This is giving our kindergarten readiness, our preschool, those students are, this is really our first group of kindergartners. Right now is kindergarten who had preschool. They're coming. We're aligning our standards. We've got reading corps. We've got title. We've got all of these things that we're doing and we're really working hard and we feel that this is, this is what we want to do. And if we can do it, we will celebrate like 2022. How's that? It'll be fun. There will be a mic drop that night and we're all walking out of here. How's that? But I think, we think it's attainable. We believe that it should happen and why wouldn't it? And so some of our teachers kind of went, but we have to look at what we're doing and we can do this, so. The next one is by 2022, we are looking to, we also had another bullet of closing the achievement gaps. And the next two goals deal with gaps. And we have said that in, by 2022, percentage of students in free and reduced lunch student group will increase in current proficiency of 39.7% proficient to 50% as measured by the MCA in reading. So we're looking at having that group improved by over 10 percentage points over the next three years. And I'll tell you, if for some reason we're at 50% next year, then we're going to crank that up because we'd like to see that be 90% also. This is not just one grade level. This is students in grades three through eight and in high school. And the reason why we took the free and reduced lunch student group is because 48% of our students qualify. That's almost half our kids, half our kids. That makes a, that puts a lot of bang for the buck in there. So we need to get some things going in that area and we'll look at what other types of interventions we can do. Next one is math, free and reduced student group, increase from 29.3% proficient, up to 45% in math. And with our math study that we've got and over the next three years, we feel that that's an attainable goal. And if we get there by next year or two years from now, we will up it again a little bit for 20, you know, I think you always want to have these things going up where they're going. And then on that ACT, we decided that we would like to increase the five-year average on the ACT composite from 21.2, which is where it's been, up to 22.5. Of all the goals, that is probably the most, that is the most aggressive. Raising the ACT up one point, that's serious. So good luck, Mr. Strasser. Well, we got some ideas on what we want to do and we really believe that these are attainable. They're, they're, they're high goals, but they're reasonable. They're measurable. You can see some of the things we can report on this, which is another thing that you wanted, so there again. We want to continue to support and expand career and technical opportunities. Kind of had something like that, but that's something else we want to do. Hate to get off task too much, but today I had some meetings with Minnesota West and SWF. And I mean, there's some things that they're looking at out at Minnesota West, some possible program expansions and things that could be really great opportunity for some of our students. So they're just a lot of talk right now, but there's some great opportunities in our communities and I think we want to continue to capture that. Graduation rate, we, again, we would like to see 100% graduation rate. Our graduation rate is above the state average currently. I guess we just feel like every student should graduate, but we know we can't control it, but right now we're going to leave that as is. Effective leadership in our community is about accountability. It's about communication. We used to have the high tech up in student achievement. We looked at, you know, what effective leadership means. We're going to provide appropriate technology to students and staff. So we still have that in there, but we took it out of the, just the high tech. And of course, our fiscal responsibility. We want to continue to maintain our fund balances within policy and prioritize our expenditures. And then goal three, engaging the community with the school district, communication. One of the things we added on communication is, is that we will actively listen and solicit feedback from stakeholders. So we would like to do a little bit more surveying of the community, of our parents, of our students. And when we talk about all stakeholders, we mean students, parents and community members. We would like to get into getting more feedback on them in a variety of things. Some of that might come through, maybe we have... Some of that might come through, maybe we have to be looking at our strategic plan, so that'll kind of fit into there. And then ensuring, this is a new one also, ensuring the district is a safe place and provide great facilities for learning, we just kind of changed a little bit of the wording on that, and we have our solutions in our school safety enhancement, so those are some goals that we're looking at, these are the goals that we've put forth. I would take any comments, suggestions, or where you feel this is at.
I think they're great.
Thank you, I hope we can do it.
They're measurable, specific, actionable, they're smart goals.
Smart? What? They're smart.
With your approval, this will go out, we've, we've kind of started doing some things already with some of these, but never with any premise that they are the goals, we said that the board had to approve them, but we've kind of started talking a little bit about this with our staff, so...
So, do I have a motion to approve the district goals?
So...
Thank you, Mr. Bott, and thank you, Mrs. Weiss, any other discussion, any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So...
Thank you, Mr. Oy, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Urban, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, we're adjourned.